Okay. Welcome, everybody. August 27th, Placerville City Council meeting. Will you please all rise and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. All right. Can we get roll call, please?
Vice Mayor Clarici?
Here.
Councilmember Gottberg?
Here.
Mayor No?
Here.
Councilmember Saragosa?
Here.
Councilmember Yarborough will be noted as absent. Thank you.
Okay. Item three, we have no ceremonial matters. Closed session. Will you please report Attorney Abrahimi?
Thank you, Mayor No. The council met in closed session. There was no public comment and no reportable action.
Move to item five, adoption of the agenda.
I'll move the agenda.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None? Passes unanimously. Item six, announcements and presentations to the public. We will start with Councilmember Saragosa.
Thank you. Not a lot. I just wanted to say, because I was absent last meeting, just wanted to thank Sergeant Pratt, the PPD, for all the work they did on National Night Out. It's always a wonderful time. I actually got to four locations this year, which I never do. This is the first time ever. I think two, maybe three sometimes, but Sergeant Litz has kept me on track. And so, just want to thank everybody, thank the community and all the sponsors. It's always great to see everybody come out and get feedback and everything else. So, thank you.
Councilmember Gepper?
I attended the Closer to Home Theater performance, and it was great to see some diversity in art coming. They had received a grant, which is really great, to put that on. And it was telling LGBTQ stories in Placerville. So, quite a nice performance that they had for us here.
Where's Closer to Home? What is, for those who don't know?
That was the name of the play.
Oh, okay.
Yes.
Was it an imagination?
No, it was held at the high schools. Yeah.
Vice Mayor?
I have no thing.
Okay. I don't have anything either. Nothing too exciting since last council meeting. Okay. Item seven, the consent calendar. Do we have any council members who want to pull an item? No? Okay, we will open item seven for public comment. Seeing none, we will bring it back to the council for a discussion and a motion.
I'll move the consent calendar.
I'll second.
I have roll call, please.
Vice Mayor Clarici?
Aye.
Councilmember Gottberg?
Aye.
Councilmember Saragosa?
Aye.
Mayor No?
Aye.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Okay, we will move to item eight, public comment. This portion of the meeting is reserved for persons wishing to address the council on any matter not on the agenda that is within the jurisdiction of the city council. State law prohibits the council from acting on items not listed on the agenda except by special action of the city council under specified circumstances. The mayor reserves the right to limit speakers' time to three minutes. You are not allowed to make personal attacks on individuals or make comments which are slanderous or may invade an individual's personal privacy. Okay, we are open. Who wants to come talk to us?
Hello, council. Tammy, Dan's. I live, obviously, by the drug station. Oh, sorry, mosquito bus station. Tried to be a little funny there. Anyways, so, the homeless issue is ongoing. Okay, that's a whole nother issue. But yeah, that's still going on. Like, yesterday, I videotaped a guy, just whipping it out. You know, I've got a whole video. You don't need to see it. Just peeing broad daylight around 3:30, when all the school buses are coming, dropping the kids off. So, continuing issues with drug and homeless issues at the bus station. We really need to get keys for the officers. They have keys. I've talked to different officers. They say they have keys to the different bathrooms downtown and other places, but nobody has a key to the bus station when the bathrooms are locked and people are sleeping in there at night. And we really need to work with the county in getting those cameras updated. It'd be nice if we could switch them around. You guys could at least, you know, see who's going in the bathrooms, who's vandalizing the bathrooms, destroying, which is costing everybody money. And other than that, nice job with your officers, Chief Run. You know, at night, it's really making a difference. Could use a little bit more during the day, especially with the school back in session and the time of day when the kids get off, there's a little more activity going on. And I'm videotaping and sending videos to one of his officers, you know. Hopefully, we can knock some of this crime out of town. Anyways, thank you.
Thank you, Tammy. Anyone else? Seeing none, we will bring it back to council. Okay. Step right up. Don't be shy.
Hi, council. My name's Alex. I moved here in 2020 and cooked at most of the restaurants on Main Street. I'm a cook. And currently, I'm embarking on kind of creating a coed scouts program for boys and girls and for anyone. It's inclusive to everybody. And it's, you know, a little more about my background. I'm a combat vet also. I served in Iraq as a light infantry team leader. And so, my idea is to kind of teach some of these military values to these kids. It's called Scout Platoon. And I would welcome you all to learn more about it. And we're open to any questions. So, you could contact me by email. And I'm sure you've seen some of the signs around town. And I just want to be transparent with what I'm doing and let you guys know that I'm doing something good for the community. And I would invite you all to come check it out.
Great. Thank you for your service, Alex. If you could leave your contact information with our clerk, that would be great. Okay. 8.2. Thank you. Do we have any written communications?
No, Madam Mayor.
Okay. We will move to item nine, items pulled from the consent calendar. We have none. And we move to 10, ordinances. And we have three. 10.1, consider an ordinance amending Title VI, Chapter 19 of the Placerville City Code regulating camping on public or private property in compliance with the court actions in Grant Pass, Oregon versus Johnson. Mr. Morris?
Thank you, Mayor and council. I think this is somewhat of a simple item to explain. As you know, recently, there was a court decision, a Supreme Court decision in Grants Pass versus Johnson, in which they determined one major point, and that is that if it was not a violation at this time for some to... You do not need to allow someone to sleep on public property, where before they said if you didn't have shelter space, then you had to allow them to sleep on public property. That was reversed in this case and said that that is not a violation and you do not have to allow them to sleep on public property. We could go into more detail. I'm sure that our city attorney, she's done some investigation into this, but that's the crux of it. In our current ordinance, it states that we cannot kick them off of public property if we do not have shelter space. And so, the proposal before you tonight is simply to remove that language, which states that we have to have shelter space before we can enforce camping on public property, no camping on public property. So, that's what's before you tonight. It's some pretty simple language, just deleting some of the language in the ordinance. You can see that is there. And there's another section, Section 6.10.5, regarding daytime camping that I did not feel was appropriate either. That kind of is along the same lines. So, my recommendation is that we introduce this ordinance, which will amend that language accordingly in accordance with the recent court case.
Okay, thank you. Do we have questions from the council? Seeing none, we will open this for public comment. Seeing none, we will bring this back to council for a discussion and a motion.
I'll move the staff recommendation.
I'll second. I'll just add a little bit more comments, I guess, as well. You know, one thing I noticed, I think I might have sent it to you, Cleve, maybe Joe, was what the city of Fresno is doing in terms of updating their ordinances as well. But they're also, and in this case, they have a city attorney, but it's a little different. But basically, what they're doing is they're trying to stack some of the misdemeanors for people that are really problem children in their area to be able to add a little bit more teeth to their ordinances as well. So, I'll be interested to see how that works and how those stackable offenses actually can happen, because I would like to see something similar to that. Because what ends up happening is we arrest, but then they just, you know, people get out. If we could do something that has a little bit more teeth and holds people a little bit longer for those people that are really problems that don't move on or do something different or take, you know, go to the shelters, you know, look, seek that help. You know, I'd want to see something a little bit stronger as well, because this is great, and I think this is where we were originally. But I think in order to really protect the community going forward, I'd like to be a little bit more aggressive as well. So, I'm not saying we need to do anything now, but I want to look a little bit more into that and possibly bring something back for consideration for my colleagues. So, thank you. With that, I'll second.
Okay. Can I get roll call, please?
Councilmember Gottberg?
Aye.
Councilmember Saragosa?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Clarici?
Aye.
Mayor No?
Aye. Thank you.
10.2, consideration to amend the text of the city of Placerville zoning ordinance 10-5-15 Commercial Zone to clarify subsection B permitted uses and subsection C conditional uses with regards to a place of entertainment and new and used retail sales. Mr. Rivas?
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. The proposed code amendments regarding the commercial zone is basically to clarify the difference between permitted and conditional uses, specifically a place of entertainment and new and used retail sales. Currently, a place of entertainment is listed as a permitted use and as a use allowed by conditional use permit. New and used retail sales and service, when fully enclosed in a building, is identified as a permitted use. And new and used retail sales are also listed as a use requiring a CUP. So, you can see the conflicts there. Staff believes that when not fully enclosed in a building would require a CUP for new and used retail sales. I think that was probably the intent, probably in some past zoning code amendment that was left off, because it mirrors very closely what Eldorado County used to have in their older codes. I think that's probably what happened. So, typically, in instances where there is a conflict in the code, the more restrictive section of the code would prevail. However, these conflicts do create confusion for both staff and the public, because we have to sort of, you know, talk our way out of it as to why the inconsistency exists. So, this should clarify that. On April 9th of this year, the council approved the resolution intent to make these amendments. That was Resolution 9297, to initiate these amendments, to make these clarifications. So, to quickly summarize what the changes are, basically, number one, that would be removal of a place of entertainment from permitted uses. This use shall be solely permitted through the conditional use permit process. Two, clarification that new and used retail sales and service, when fully enclosed in a building, is by right within the commercial zone. And then, number three, clarification that new and used retail sales and service, when not fully enclosed in a building, is a use requiring a conditional use permit. These changes are consistent with how staff has applied the code in the past. So, there's no change in past practice. Let's see. On June 4th of this year, the Planning Commission considered these proposed amendments and recommended that the city council approve them as presented. Staff did have a discussion with our former city planner, who, you know, thankfully, does keep in contact with us and helps us with interpretation. So, we're always, you know, we're always glad to get the extra help. We call our former city planner, we call him City Planner Emeritus. So, he suggested that we list these uses independently and separately as to eliminate any confusion. And staff does support this recommendation. And we would further recommend that the council just direct this formatting modification, which would not change the meaning of the code. So, staff would bring back an ordinance for adoption with this change in formatting. And what I mean by that is some of the sections will have a multiple of uses that are separated by commas. And so, sometimes, if you don't get the punctuation right, they tend to string together or they tie together. And that would eliminate that. We would just list them. So, staff is recommending that the city council introduce, waive the first reading of an ordinance, amending zoning code ordinance, Section 10-5-15, the commercial zone, subsections B and C, with regards to place of entertainment and new and used retail sales, and also including the formatting change. This concludes staff's report. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rivas. Do we have questions from the council? And at this time, we will open this for public comment. Seeing none, we will bring it back for a discussion and a motion.
I will move staff recommendation with the formatting change.
I will second that.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Gottberg?
Aye.
Councilmember Saragosa?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Clarici?
Aye.
Mayor No?
Aye. Thank you.
We'll move to 10.3, consideration of a request from the city of Placerville to one, amend Title 10 zoning to the Placerville City Code to address required 2021 to 29 Housing Element Implementation Program B7, Family Daycare Homes to comply with the California Health and Safety Code, Section 1597.45. Mr. Rivas?
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. Even though this looks a little complex, it's actually fairly simple. So, the purpose of this request is to amend the zoning ordinance to address our required 2021, 2029 Housing Element Implementation Program. This is B7 with regards to family daycare homes and to conform with new state regulations, specifically California Health and Safety Code, Sections 1597.45 and Senate Bill 234. These tax amendments are the minimum to bring consistency with state housing law only. There's nothing else added in here. On June 4th of this year, the Planning Commission did consider the proposed amendments and recommended that the city council approve these zone tax amendments. The California Health and Safety Code does define a small family daycare home and a large family daycare home. Provided definitions of family home sizes are provided below. And I'll go ahead and just read them, because it'll sound confusing. And it is confusing. So, the small family daycare home states, "A facility that provides care, protection, and supervision for eight or fewer children, including children under 10 years of age, who reside at the home." The definition of a large family daycare home is as follows, "A facility that provides care, protection, and supervision for seven to 14 children inclusive, including children under 10 years of age, who reside at the home." So, there's a little bit of an overlap. The state did eliminate what was a medium-sized daycare home and just created then the small and the large. But it's important to understand that these do require licensing by the state, Department of Social Services. And so, there's a very, there's a number of different provisions that they have to meet. And so, depending upon whether those children are infants or the children of the provider, it may vary those numbers. And that's why you see that overlap, so as not, to not be so confused. So, with that, staff is recommending that the council introduce and waive the first reading of an ordinance. And this would amend Title 10 of the Placerville zoning ordinance as follows. We would amend 10-1-4, that's the definitions section of the code, 10-5-4, state residential, 10-5-5, R1A, that's single-family acre residential, 10-5-6, that's R120,000, that's the half acre, 10-5-7, R110,000, that's the square foot lot size, 10-5-8, R16,000, that's single-family residential, 6,000 lot size. Then, 10-5-9, which is R2, that's low-density multifamily residential, 10-5-10, that's R3, medium-density multifamily residential, 10-5-11, R4, high-density multifamily residential, and 10-5-12, R5, which is the very high multifamily residential of Title 10. So, the state is telling us we are to allow both small and large family daycare homes in all of these residential zones. And the only thing that I would add, and I had some discussion with our city attorney earlier, is if you feel that that is confusing, we could add at the end of both those definitions, basically towards the end, we just write, we would just include of age, who reside at the home, and then add, subject to licensing by the Community Care Licensing Division of the State Department of Social Services. But that's your option. With that, that concludes staff's report. Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks for cleaning up the language and keeping us in compliance. Do we have any questions from the council?
On behalf of Placerville taxpayers, I apologize for having to do this inane work.
Okay, we will open this for public comment?
Wait a second. None of the work that our staff does is inane. It's peculiar sometimes. I'm assuming, though, that I just can't go home and say, "Hey, honey, I'd like to start a small care house at our home." You still have to go through a licensing process, correct? And that was that little bit at the very end that you were talking about? Yeah, I'd like that added. I think that would be a good thing to add, just for comfort.
Clarici daycare. It has a ring to it.
Nobody would want to leave their kids.
Okay, we will open this to public comment?
Sue Rodman, good afternoon, good evening, whatever we are. I would like to see us add the bit about having licensing and that these... I would agree with our attorney that that needs to be added, to make this clear. So, if somebody doesn't just go home and say, "Oh, okay, we can have a daycare here." No. You gotta comply with the rules and get a license.
Thank you.
Mayor, if I may, the state changes did eliminate the requirement that they have a city business license.
Wow.
Okay. Any other comments? Okay, we will bring this back to the council for further discussion and a motion.
I'll move the staff recommendation with the added extra language about licensing.
I'll second. I'll second.
We have roll call, please?
Councilmember Gottberg?
Aye.
Councilmember Saragosa?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Clarici?
Aye.
Mayor No?
Aye.
Okay, that brings us to item 11, public hearings. We have none. Item 12, discussion and action items. 12.1, consideration to adopt a resolution declaring the abandoned pole sign located at 6373 Main Street as an abandoned on-premises sign and a public nuisance and to, and declare to commence abatement. Mr. Rivas? Are you popular tonight?
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. Let me start by saying, based on a review of the city records, no permit clearly identified the final construction of the subject pole sign that's before you. However, this pole sign was approved June 17th, 1979, as part of Site Plan Review 7907, which established the KFC at 73 Main Street. Based on our review of previous Google Map images, the sign currently reads, "Out of Jail Bail Bonds." That was added to the subject pole sign between March of 2019 and February 2021. And this is based on the business's social media. The business, Out of Jail Bail Bonds, was established at 63 Main Street in 2017. City records indicate that the business did not have a business license during its duration at the subject parcel. However, records indicate that the utilities for the unit, which is 63 Main Street, was canceled in May of 2021. So, it's come to staff's attention that this sign has been vacant since early 2021. And based on this information, the subject property has a sign that, one, includes advertising for a previous tenant that's been gone for three and three and a half years. And, two, the second existing tenant, 73 Main Street, which is KFC, present on the site since 1980, has not utilized the pole sign for their own copy. It is therefore the opinion of staff that the sign's structure is abandoned. Pursuant to zoning code Section 10417B, an abandoned business is one that has not operated on a regular or active basis for a period of 180 days or more, during which the business advertisement has not carried on those activities which are necessary and incidental to the operation of a business or like or character. Further, this pole sign does not meet the city's current pole sign design standards and would probably not be permitted in its current figuration. This is a legitimate means for the city to abate these non-conforming signs that are not in use. Staff has received a letter. That letter was signed by both the property owner and the KFC tenant, which is attached to your staff report. So, with that, staff is recommending that the council adopt the proposed resolution to declare this an abandoned on-premises sign on the subject property to be a public nuisance and to declare to abate as such. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions from council?
Do we have, is there anybody here from the TE Bradley Trust or KFC? All right, thank you.
I have a question. I don't understand. If Kentucky Fried Chicken doesn't use the sign, why did they send us a letter?
I can only speculate that when we looked at some of the old permitting for KFC, KFC utilized the sign, in addition to the sign that they had on the building.
Right.
So, I'm just, and again, I'm just making assumptions since the owners aren't here. But I'm assuming that there was that suite on the west side of that building that was used by other businesses. I'm trying to think of the Bagel Works used to be located there.
Yes, that's excellent. Bagel Works knowledge right there.
Yeah. Bagels, you're right. And, you know, but I don't recall if they utilized that sign or not. But Out of Jail Bail Bonds was there for a period of time.
Right.
And then, they disappeared, and that's been since 2021. So, their well have exceeded the 180 days that we would consider suitable to look at it as an abandoned pole sign.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Yeah, their letters that they wanted to use it as a, basically, it's valuable to, if they rented out again.
I read this. I just, yeah, why KFC would care? They don't use a sign.
Yeah.
Okay.
They're not here, so.
Okay. There's no more questions? We'll open this for public comment?
Sue Rodman again. That is a particularly ugly sign. And it does not do anything for people driving into the city of Placerville. KFC might be okay to have there, but Bail Bonds, that's not even there, does not give the best impression of the city, and especially, that is a hideous sign. So, I think we need to get rid of that one.
Thank you.
Good evening. Ryan Carter, City of Placerville. I was just curious if staff could explain how the property owner could keep that sign legal with that suite being vacant. Would they just make the sign white with no business advertised or coming soon? How would that property owner bring that sign into compliance so they could keep it as an asset for their property for a future tenant of that suite? Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, we'll bring it back to the council. Can we have staff answer that one question?
Sure. Basically, because that sign has not been in use for 180 days or more, it is the city's prerogative to declare it a nuisance and cause its abandonment. Mr. Carter stated, what if they just kept the sign blank? That's still an abandoned sign. It's a pending sign structure. So, it would be in the same circumstance. Had they were, had Out of Here Bail Bonds removed their copy, we would still be here tonight. The sign should have been used, it could have been used by the property owner. Your KFC could have put their copy on the sign, and then it would not have been abandoned.
Thank you.
You just answered my question. I was gonna say, could KFC, could they come back and just put KFC up on the, on the bat? I mean, if they just decided to put KFC, they'd be fine.
They certainly could have done that in the past, yes.
But would it now? Like, what if they decided to put KFC on the?
That's the prerogative of the council.
Okay. The only reason I bring it up is because this is, this is part three of the... Okay. And always I bring it up is because this is, this is part three of this on, and we've given off ramps to the other two people that have come before us to do something different. Like, for instance, the one in, where the UPS store is on Broadway, it's now called, I think Creekside Plaza or something. They, they put something into that, into it. And then we had one, another, a second one, and then that one, we gave, I think, 180 days to do a sale of that property. And then it was blank. So inconsistent for being consistent with that, I don't have a problem, because it, you know, no one's been there. But, but because we've done it for two other ones, I would say, at the very least, and I, I mean, I'm disappointed that nobody's here, because if you really care about something, you should be here to, you know, state your case. But, that being said, I would feel comfortable with going back to them and saying, look, if you don't, either you got two choices. You put KFC up on it, or within 180 days, you got to have a new tenant with their, with their things on it. Otherwise, that pole comes down.
Okay. So when we're doing this, you notify the owner of the sign, correct, that you're gonna take this action?
We do. We notify the, the owner of the sign in advance.
Yeah.
So they're aware that we're going, going to set it for hearing.
At some point, I think we need to just tear this bandage off and do this. And, yeah, I mean, you'd, you'd have to come all the way from San Mateo. I mean, geez, come on. Anyway, I, I think we should just declare it and then see what happens.
Mayor, if I can make just a, just, just a few comments, and this is in, with respect to an action that was before you in the past in regards to that pole sign located where the UPS store is on Broadway. So with that particular sign, what makes that one a little bit different? That went through a site plan review process. So that, that sign met architectural standards and design standards in accordance with our sign ordinance, and it went through a whole process, went to the planning commission and such. So it, it's consistent with the architecture of, of the building. It's a newer sign under permits. With respect to the other one, that was on Green Valley Road, that was the Christlike Services that was up there for many years. That sign was abandoned for quite a long time. The property owner did provide testimony that it was his intention to sell the property, and therefore the council gave him 180 days to sell the property so that it would keep the value. With respect to this property, it's, it's not for sale. I don't even know if they're trying, attempting to lease that, that site or that suite. But this sign, unfortunately, does not meet our current standards. It's a very old pole sign.
Okay. Further conversation from the council?
No, no.
Nicole?
Yeah, I'm kind of, I mean, I do think we could say that this is different and the reasons why is just explained. I think I'd also feel differently if the letter, since it was co-signed by KFC, said that they had an interest in utilizing that sign, but they did not. So, you know.
They're just asking for an open-ended, do-nothing solution.
Like, if there was a solution proposed, then I would have felt a little differently than I do. Because the other folks that came before us did have some desire to move a resolution or a proposal forward.
I guess, Pierre, did we give them the option? Did we tell them, you can put KFC on it and then you'll be okay?
No, we don't go that far. We basically explain to them.
I think part of it is, people don't know. I mean, that's the other thing is.
No, we don't tell them what they can do.
Well, I don't disagree, I don't disagree with that. I'm just saying, my guess would be that if we gave them the option at this point, but.
You know, but it begs the question, if someone calls you up from the city and says, we're gonna tear your sign down if you don't do, you know, you should at least, you would think the person would go, hey, wait a second.
You would think.
How do we fix that? And if they're not even that, I don't know, have that much energy, we shouldn't worry more about their sign than they are.
City manager?
Excuse me. Mayor and council, can I ask Pierre a question that I should have asked sooner?
Please.
Pierre, what, what would it take to bring the sign up to standards? What is it missing?
The height of the sign, okay, so to bring it to standard, typically, under current code, it would require a conditional use permit variance to allow for the additional height. I think it's higher than 10 feet. And it would, it would go through an architectural review, a site plan review process. So they would propose probably, you know, skirting or some structure to cover the pole. So it's not just a lollipop sign, if you will. It's more of an architectural sign consistent with the KFC building as a whole.
Thank you.
What is the will of the council?
I'm gonna move staff recommendation.
I'll second.
Your roll call, please.
Councilmember Gottberg?
Aye.
Councilmember Saragosa?
No.
Vice Mayor Clarici?
Aye.
May or no?
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you.
Okay, we will move to 12.2. Consider approving amendment number one to the agreement for engineering services for a reduced amount of $214,510 and notice to proceed number two with REY engineers in the amount of $142,405 and budget appropriations totaling $2 million for the Smith Flat Road storm drain and paving project. Ms. McConnell?
Thank you, Mayor No, and city council members. The item before you this evening will approve and authorize all of the necessary steps to allow the Smith Flat Road storm drain and paving project to move into the final design phase. On August 8th, 2023, the city council approved an agreement for engineering services with REY engineers for the Smith Flat Road project, and at that same time, authorized staff to issue notice to proceed number one for the preliminary engineering phase. During preliminary engineering, REY completed a thorough, thorough condition assessment of the storm drain culverts and the city sewer main on Smith Flat Road. They completed a drainage study which evaluated storm drain system and made recommendations to improve capacity in the culverts as well as flow in the roadside ditches. And a comprehensive geotech report was prepared and evaluated alternatives for pavement rehabilitation, including full removal and replacement, partial depth recycling, and full depth pavement reclamation. The outcome of the preliminary design efforts was a refined set of 30% design plans, which recommended full removal and replacement of the pavement, storm drain improvements, including replacement of many of the cross culverts in Smith Flat Road, and adding parallel curv culverts to increase capacity, ditch clearing, and sewer main spot repairs at identified locations. The project was determined to be categorically exempt from CEQA because the project involves rehabilitation and replacement of existing facilities. Additionally, through the preliminary engineering process, staff and REY worked together to evaluate their scope of services and determine that some of the services would no longer be necessary. The largest scope reduction is related to structural engineering design services that are no longer needed because a large culvert that was in question was actually found to be in good condition. Staff is recommending approval of amendment number one to reduce REY's services in the amount of $214,000 and issuance of notice to proceed number two for REY to begin the final design phase. At the, or sorry, not November, June 3rd, 2024 Measure H and L committee meeting, the committee recommended budget appropriations from Measure H and Measure L for construction of the Smith Flat Road project in fiscal year 2425. Combined with the recommended budget appropriation from the Surface Transportation Block Grant Program Exchange Funds, will bring the total project budget to 2.6 million. Based on the preliminary construction cost estimate, staff anticipates that we will need to identify and appropriate additional funding in the next year when we are ready to award a construction contract. But the cost estimate and proposed improvements will be further refined during final design, and we will look for other project cost savings. But nonetheless, the Smith Flat Road project is the top priority for the engineering department for construction in summer of 2025, and we will continue to push this project along and complete bid documents by spring. That concludes my verbal report, and I'm happy to answer any questions you have.
Thank you. Questions from council? Seeing none, we will open this for public comment?
Sue Rodman, member of the Measure H, Measure L committee, so I was there to say, yeah, we need to do this. Smith Flat Road is definitely a mess and needs help. So I think this is a good thing, and I think it's great that our engineers can do some of this design work and not have to just rely on, on contractors. So fantastic. Good for our engineers.
Thank you. Anyone else? Seeing none, we will bring it back for discussion. I, for one, am really excited about this project getting done. It's long overdue.
I will move staff's recommendation.
I'll second that motion.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Gottberg?
Aye.
Councilmember Saragosa?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Clarici?
Aye.
May or no?
Aye.
Okay, that moves us to 12.3. Consider ratifying or approving construction contract change order number seven through 15 with Doug Veerkamp, General Engineering Incorporated, in the total combined amount of $654,944.32 for the Broadway Maintenance Project, approving budget appropriations totaling $228,720, and approving amendment number one to the Surface Transportation Block Grant Program Exchange Fund Agreement with Eldorado County Transportation Commission. Ms. McConnell?
Thank you. Again, Mayor No. The item before you this evening will approve and ratify contract change orders number seven through number 15 and approve budget appropriations for the Broadway Maintenance Project. This item will also approve an amendment to the Surface Transportation Block Grant Exchange Funds Agreement with EDCTC. On January 23rd of this year, the city council approved a construction contract with Doug Veerkamp in an amount just over $4.9 million. At that same time, city council approved contract change order number one, which eliminated the Wiltsey Road storm drain improvement contract items. On June 25th, 2024, the city council ratified and approved CCOs number two through number six. Since June, there have been some additional unforeseen site conditions, project changes, and other opportunities to deliver a more complete project have come up. The change orders that, to be ratified this evening include necessary water service connections, the installation of two new water valves that will enable public work staff to better isolate the water system on Broadway, minor sewer design modifications, and the removal of unforeseen concrete pavement that was found below the roadway surface. For consideration of approval this evening includes contract change orders for unanticipated rock excavation along the new sewer line alignment, a storm drain pipe replacement on a pipe that failed during other project work, and most notably, storm drain pipelining and storm drain manhole and inlet modifications associated with adding the Wiltsey Road storm drain improvements back into the Broadway Maintenance Project. Because of other project cost savings, value engineering, and redesign of the storm drain modifications, there is sufficient contingency available in the project budget, and staff is very excited to present this proposal. If approved, 462 feet of the 36-inch storm drain pipe would be lined from the Chanel School Road intersection to the creek outlet at Wiltsey Road. 412, what, or sorry, 415 feet of 12-inch pipe would be lined along the frontage of the Placerville business and out to the creek through the tractor supply parking lot. And a new manhole would be installed in the Chanel School Road intersection where currently an existing storm drain junction is buried underneath the pavement and is inaccessible. To fund these improvements, staff is recommending liquidating funds from the Wiltsey Road Storm Drain Project and reappropriating funds to the Broadway Maintenance Project. This CIP was always intended to be delivered with the Broadway Maintenance Project. Additionally, staff is recommending liquidating the remaining Surface Transportation Block Grant Exchange Funds from the Chanel School Road overlay project and appropriating those funds to the Broadway Maintenance Project. To achieve this, staff is recommending approval of amendment number one to the fiscal year 2019-2020 Surface Transportation Block Grant Exchange Funds Agreement with the Eldorado County Transportation Commission. And lastly, just over this last week, staff had a really good conversation with Caltrans, encouraging their participation and share in the cost of the Wiltsey Road storm drain improvements. The 36-inch pipe that runs from Chanel School Road out to the creek is the primary drainage system supporting the entire US 50 Chanel School Road interchange, so all highway runoff goes into this pipe. Acknowledging this, Caltrans staff is reviewing our proposal, and we hope to report back with some good news on that. That concludes my verbal report, and I'm happy to answer any questions you have.
Thank you. Questions from the council?
Not really quite, just make a couple of comments. One, I hope that, I hope that's a really good conversation. But no, I just wanted to say, I mean, just for the public, I mean, just, it just goes to show, whenever we, whenever we open up the ground, whenever we're doing a road, we're talking 100-year-old pipes, different things, there are problems. There are things that we can't see unless we had X-ray vision. Sometimes we do, we do have some of those things. But there's invariably problems. I mean, just like we saw for the, the 2 million for Smith Flat, I mean, there's, these things are expensive and inflation and everything else. You know, I wish we could do a lot more, but sometimes we have to, you know, the dollar doesn't go as far as it did even a couple of years ago. So I just wanted to put an underline underneath of that because, I mean, this is obviously a huge project for the city, and we knew where we were gonna find things underneath the ground, and I'm glad we're getting everything done. But I just wanted to say, you know, this is why we're not doing every street at one time. It's a lot of money. And so there's only so much that goes around, and we want to do it right so we don't just pave over something that's gonna ultimately break in about a year because we didn't do it right, because we wanted to do it on the cheap. And so this is, you know, this is, I think, exhibit 1A for something like that. So thank you.
Are there questions? Comments? No? Okay, we will open 12.3 for public comment?
Everything on Broadway seems to be the projects that keep giving back in problems. And we're so much better off to just take a pause and figure out what we really need to do to fix it so that it will last long term. So I'm really happy to see these, and I'm happy that they get to put Wiltsey back in it because I think that's an integral part of this whole system, and if we didn't, it would prove to be a problem. So I think this is a, is a good proposal. Our engineers are doing a great job.
Great. Thank you. Other comments on 12.3? Seeing none, we will bring it back to the council for a discussion and a motion.
I'll move the staff recommendation.
I'll second.
Your roll call, please.
Councilmember Gottberg?
Aye.
Councilmember Saragosa?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Clarici?
Aye.
May or no?
Aye.
All right, thank you. We will move to item 13, council reports from other agencies. The Transit Authority did not meet, the Transportation Commission did not meet, LaFco did not meet. SECOG, you weren't here last time, so we want to report.
Yeah. Well, for SECOG, actually, so we'll be, and I'll get a, an invitation out to everybody, but we're gonna be in Placerville at the Sheriff's EOC in September, because we do, so Eldorado County is sort of the last county out of the six counties. They've done sort of the meetings in every county in the jurisdiction, and since I was chair this year, we're doing it last year. So we'll get, we'll get that invitation out. We're gonna go. So we'll be here, and then we'll go up Highway 50, we'll go to Apple Hill, then come back down, kind of go through Broadway, and then for a tour, then come back to the regular meeting. But just to kind of show some of the things that we're doing, and then working with Supervisor Thomas, highlighting, you know, different parts of it. There'll be apple donuts, of course, and some other things as we go forward. And so hopefully everybody can make it. And thank you, Cleve, for some of the slides that you gave me as well. We're just gonna give a little bit of history of the city and things that we're doing. So it should be fun. It'll be nice to highlight, it'd be nice to show Upper Broadway some of the cool things that are going on there from Civic Lab when we first started, and then see what else. We had a, a retreat yesterday, actually, for SECOG, just to do some planning for next year. We have some potential legislation that we have to do to try to align our planning with MTC, with the Bay Area. There's some good reasons for us to be able to have it on the same, same timeline, just for some of the mega-region projects that go on. So we're looking at that, and I think that's about it.
Great. Thank you. All right, Pioneer Energy, Councilmember Yarborough is not here, Fire Safe Council did not meet, and that brings us to Opportunity Knox.
Did not meet.
Did not meet, okay. Number 14, requests for future agenda items. Do we have any? None, seeing none. We will move to item 15, city manager and staff reports. 15.1, receive and file the July 2024 police report stats. Chief Ren, have anything for us?
I have nothing.
Okay. Okay, we will move to 15.2, receive and file July Fire Station 25 run report. Chief Cordero?
Good evening, Mayor and council. A couple items, just to bring your attention. I know that we've been talking about our annexation process with Diamond Springs and the need to get SB 1240 completed. I'm happy to report that last Thursday, it cleared its final hurdle with committees in the Senate and Assembly floor. It should now be sitting on the governor's desk, so we're waiting for that signature. We have retained annexation costs. consultant that's now working with us, and we anticipate getting our formal application to LAFC sometime, hopefully in October. And then within your packet, you'll see the run stats for Station 25. It's been a busy summer for the crews. This little reprieve in the weather we had has given us a little bit of break on some of the wildland fires. But unfortunately, the crews have had about six working structure fires in the last six or seven days, so they kind of immediately transitioned and kept going. And then I did want to acknowledge, on the front of my report, you'll see Captain Jason Lindberg, who retired from our agency in July. Captain Lindberg joined our department in the early 90s, worked at Station 25 as a firefighter paramedic for a good chunk of his career before he promoted to captain, but then he did serve the city of Placerville as a captain on Engine 25 for a number of years before he retired. So we wish him well and thank him for his service to our agency. With that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Questions from the council?
I don't have a question, but chief, don't leave. I have a question for you about something. It has nothing to do with this, it has nothing to do with the city, but your expertise will be important. So don't leave.
All right. Thank you. Move to 12.3, Development Services Department's Development Permitting Statistics for the month of July 2024. Mr. Rivas?
Thank you, mayor and council. Staff has nothing to add to these stats for last month, but happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Great. All right, we will open 15.1, 15.2, and 15.3 to public comment. Seeing none, we will bring it back to the council. We will flip the page.
Mayor, could, could I add one item to there?
Please do.
Came in afterwards. I just want to make this announcement and give some credit to what I like to call the man behind the curtain, Steve McCargill, behind us. I did send something out to you to let you know that the CPUC staff is recommending our grant approval in the amount of, let me get the right number here, $20,198,943. That doesn't go to the PUC until the end of the month, of, end of September, excuse me, September 26th. But very good news for us, and I want to give Steve McCargill the credit. He has bird-dogged this, answered a lot of questions that have come from them, and our consultant and him have done a great job in keeping this moving forward. So very exciting that we got that. I can share the actual announce, or the, the resolution that I have here with you, if you'd like to see that. Eldorado County received about 86 million. We received total of Eldorado County, we were 20 million of that. So very happy to do that. I told Steve when we saw this, I said, okay, now the real work begins. So it's gonna be a lot of work to keep this moving and get some good things done. And for the community, this is our program to provide fiber to the home, fast, high-speed energy net service to all businesses and homes within the city of Placerville. So this is the first, only the first phase. Unfortunately, this 20 million will not do all of it, but it'll give us a very good start to get it going. So I just want to let everybody know that, that we'll, we'll keep you informed. I'm assuming, we've had several, there's been three rounds, I think, that have gone to the, the PUC, and they've always, they've accepted all of them, the staff's recommendation. So we, we assume that ours will be also. So, thank you.
That is super exciting for Placerville.
Fantastic news, Cleve. That's awesome.
Yeah, yeah. Everyone's been asking about fiber for a very long time. So good news, good news for Placerville. Thank you, thank you. All right, item 16, upcoming items. I'll let everyone read those on their own. And that brings us to item 17, adjournment at 6:09 PM.